All right.
We're slow on the uptake, sorry.
All right, it's seven o'clock. How about we call this meeting to order? And Mr. McKnight, you want to lead us in the end of the occasion?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege we have in living in a country where we can elect our governing officials, both on a national, state, and local level. We know that voting is a privilege. We know that this particular election has been filled with anxiety and concern on both sides. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that you would restore a sense of peace. And we ask, Heavenly Father, that you would encourage us in the days to come to look out for the needs of others, that we would continue to support the food banks, that we continue to look out for those who are in need in our own neighborhoods. And Heavenly Father, we can ask again that you would keep us safe from the virus and keep us also safe from other issues that would beset us. And we pray for our staff and the authority workers, our workers here in the borough, our first responders and our police. We pray for their protection. Thank you for all your blessings upon us. And we thank you that you've made this world and that you indeed have continued to govern it. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
Of America.
For which it stands.
Yeah.
One nation. One nation under God.
End of this.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right, any citizen comments, Fred?
None.
Oh, we need to do roll call, sorry, missed that.
Mr. Crouch. Mrs. Deal.
How's that?
Mr. Erickson. Mr. Darius.
Yes.
Mr. Sinkovitz. Mr. Penner.
Here. All right, going down to legal matters. Mr. McKnight, we got one there ordinance 2020-09, setting the tax rates for 2021. Confirmation with our 2021 general fund budget.
Yes, we could. We could advertise this later in the month for adoption on December the 15th. Are there any questions about the ordinance itself?
No, sounds like we're good to go for that.
We previously talked about the curfew ordinance that's able to be adopted at the end of the month. We'll advertise that. And we sent you by email the amendment to the traffic and parking ordinance. And it took me a while to figure out exactly what I was supposed to do with that. But I finally worked it out and take a look at that. I think it's appropriate to authorize its advertisement for adoption. There still might be some changes to it if you don't like the wording. It does. It does several things. It clarifies the fact that pending section four to say that there's no parking on the west side of West Street from Main Street to Steelstown Road. I've kept the language for the east side of West Street from Main Street to the Steelstown Road. No parking from eight forty-five to four fifteen, Monday through Friday are days when the school's in session. So it's, that's one amendment. We've also talked about now we have in section five, number fifteen, we now have street sweeping cleaning on the first Monday and Tuesday of each month. There'll be no parking from eight AM to three PM on the following streets. On the first Monday on the odd house numbered side of the streets. On the first Tuesday on the even house number side of the streets, including Main, High, Parsonage, North and South Corporation, Broad Street, Fairfield Street, Vine Street, West Street, Buchanan Street, Walnut Street. If I've missed any streets, tell me and we can add those to it. And we can authorize, we also are authorizing meter enforcement for the miserable parking lot on Gleam Avenue. Fred, does that hit the highlights?
It's it.
Okay, so take a look at that and see it was a little tricky because I don't want anyone to think that we're trying to reinvent the wheel on West Street. So just trying to make sure that there's no parking on the western side.
Any questions on this?
You could authorize. You could authorize the advertisement for possible enactment at the end of the November meeting for the amendment to the parking ordinance.
All right, so is everybody good with doing that at the meeting at the end of the month for the parking ordinance? So look it over if you have any questions, bounce them off Marcus. We do need to vote to advertise. What's that?
Yeah, to authorize advertising.
So we need to vote to authorize advertising on ordinance 2020-09, which is setting the tax rates for 2021. So need to move on that.
Send it.
Asking for a motion or?
Yeah, okay, so Joey moved it. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so we can go ahead and advertise for the tax rates, correct?
Yep.
And you don't need a motion yet for the parking one, we'll do that at the end of the month.
Well, we could, no, actually, you can do it now if you want to.
Do you guys want to do it now?
Just so that we can advertise it?
Yep.
Yes, I think we should, that way it'll be in there.
All right, so is that a motion, Joey?
Yes.
All right, so it's been moved.
Seconded.
Bob seconded it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries, advertise the parking ordinance as well, amendments. Anything else, Marcus?
I just want to mention in passing, the EDA authorized the application for a 503(c) exemption. We finished the application. I'm going to send it over to the to the board chairman and have her review it and then sign it so we can get it filed this week. So that should help. How long it's going to take to get approved, we're not sure, but at least we'll get it in.
Yeah, we'll open up some funding doors, some options for us.
That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Marcus?
Fred, anything else?
Yes, we should talk. We should talk about the Humane Society Agreement for 2021. This is the same agreement that we've had in prior years. The cost to the borough is $250 and it allows the Humane Society to come out and pick up any stray dogs that the police department may encounter and place in a holding. So it's the same agreement that we've had in prior year.
And it's just for dogs, isn't it, Fred?
Well, if you can take a cat, you'll have to get permission from the chief. He has an authorization for him to take a cat. If you take a cat in, you will get it back. They will not take it. They will deal with the cat and neuter it, give it shots, make it healthy, and you will have the cat returned.
Okay, thanks.
There are several other organizations that also do the same thing for cats. I will tell you, in some of the townships, there are herds of feral cats as much as high as forty or fifty that are wandering around. And you could have cat drives if you wanted to. So you have to be careful that people aren't feeding cats in your neighborhood without taking possession of them. So it's a concern, but it's not a problem that I know of yet in the borough with feral cats that are just wandering loose. The problem is that.
Yes, it is. It is, it's a lot of cats down my way, a whole lot of cats.
Well, the danger, of course, is that in the wintertime especially, other animals that are infected with rabies can cause an outbreak within the feral cat community, and that's not good.
No.
So Fred, do you want a motion to go ahead and approve that?
We can put it on the agenda for the November meeting and approve it then.
All right, very good. Any questions about that agreement? Nothing's changed since last year, right?
That's correct.
Scott, could I go back to Marcus for a moment?
Sure.
Marcus, the EDA 501(c)(3) application, is there a filing fee associated with that?
I'm not sure if there is, we'll advance it and pay it.
Well, you just say when the beautification society filed their application, the filing fee was $600.
That would surprise me. Yeah, I just wondered if the short form was a little cheaper, but we'll see.
Anything else for Marcus? All right, moving down to administration, Michael. Item number one, final adoption of the 2021 budget.
That sort of speaks for itself. We just need to, if nobody has any questions or recommends any changes to it, we need to get adoption moving forward.
Any questions on the budget?
It will be advertised this week.
Okay. So the final vote will be on at the end of the month. Okay, hearing none, moving on to number two about hiring part-time receptionists.
I think Fred had sent an email out with that, that making that recommendation. I haven't heard any other proposals, and I think it's a good suggestion. Vicky's do a great job, so I don't know if we need to put that on the agenda for our November meeting or probably should take action on it now so we can get things in place.
Do you want to action on it now, Fred?
Either way, you can do it tonight or you can do it on the 24th. I don't see any problems doing it on the 24th. I think we're covered right now.
You don't think we'll need her before the 24th?
Yeah, we have no one scheduled to be off, so it would only be if someone took sick.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, I hadn't thought to question that whenever I talked to you earlier, Fred, but.
No, that's okay, Mike. It's entirely up to you. If you want to do it tonight, she is in agreement to work. She doesn't want a permanent job, but she would be happy to fill in.
Let's put it on the agenda for the 24th then.
Okay. Very good. Number three, discuss resolution 2020-07, which is our appointments of wards and authorities. I think that list is in your package.
Have the list now. I believe Jim McNally's term on the planning commission is expiring as well. I spoke to Jim, he is not interested in continuing his work there. He's largely because of health reasons, but he's just cutting back on involvement in different things. And so he has to be relieved of that going forward. So I've got a couple of folks I'm going to speak to this week regarding if they have interest in serving in that capacity. And I'll let everybody know what I find out as soon as I have those answers. I do think it would be appropriate for council to do something to recognize Jim for all his years of service to the borough. I think he's served the borough in various capacities for 25 years or so. And I think we ought to do something to acknowledge that.
That sounds good. Any questions with this list for now? We can move on this also at the end of the month.
Yes.
Okay, very good, anything else, Mike?
We have, with regards to the code enforcement position, the police secretary has expressed interest in taking that, those duties on in addition to what she's doing now. The part-time work as secretary is not enough to, I think with all her driving all the way up from where she lives. So she had expressed interest in more hours and Todd mentioned the code enforcement to her, she's interested. So we're going to be meeting with she and the chief hopefully next week to discuss that. And if any of y'all have any input on that, be glad to hear what your thoughts are. But it's a benefit in a lot of ways. She's already in the police department, has regular contact with the officer. So sharing them information is, you know, very easy to take care of. She can refer things to them, they can refer things to her. It's, she's already there, has access to them and the information. So I think it's, we don't have to advertise for a new employee. And so there's a number of different benefits to it.
What do you think, Mike, in terms of her qualifications as compared to the other person you've been talking to?
I think either one is probably qualified. The issue with the other lady I was talking to is that she's, her availability, when I talked to her some more, she's only available on Wednesday and the weekends. So that would limit her ability to really make contact with people in the borough about any violations or that sort of thing. And she told me upfront, she said, I know this may preclude my me being considered for the position. But she's, since school is back in session, children are going back to school. She works for Head Start and so she works for them Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So Wednesday and Saturday would be the only day she would have available to work. And she said, you know, she's used to farm work and trucking work, so long days don't bother her. But if she had, she would put in long days. But I really think that we're better off having somebody who's throughout the borough several days a week and is able to contact folks more when they're home more so, which the if we have somebody circulating in the afternoon, I think we'll be able to contact more people directly with that regard. So I spoke to her and told her I didn't think it would, that the one day a week availability would really be suitable. And she understood that completely, so.
Very good. Anything else?
That is all I have.
Any questions for Mike? All right, EDA, discuss letter in response to request for Tri-County Regional and Planning Commission for Borough Projects to be included in the 2045 Regional Transportation Plan. 2045, you still going to be around, Fred?
I don't think so. Look, it sounds like a long time, but they actually pull projects off this every year. So once you get on, that's the accomplishment.
Yeah. All right, anything, who wants to lead that discussion?
Yeah.
I don't think so, Fred. We haven't talked about it and you know the details of this better than I do.
The Tri-County Planning Commission reached out to us and asked if we had any projects to submit for the regional transportation plan. By way of background, this used to be known as Transportation Enhancements Plan. That's how we got the funding for the Trailhead. That's how we funded the period lights and streetscape improvements on Big Spring Ave. So we have been successful. And last time we went into this project, we were able to take out over $400,000. Takes you about two or three years to, you know, get in and get your projects through the process. But two projects that we would like to submit involve state roadway, South High Street being one from the red light down to the spring bridge, which would be period lighting and streetscape improvements totaling $512,727. And of course, the other project everyone is familiar with is a replacement and upgrade of the traffic signal. Again, the estimate on that from Grove Miller, our transportation consultants, $262,432. So those are the two projects that I would like authorization to submit.
Do you need that authorization tonight or can that just be put on the agenda?
We can do it at the regular meeting agenda. And I also wish to let you know that when Lauren emailed me, she informed me that Pendott will be paving 641 Main Street, 233 High Street, and 533 Fairfield and Vine Street. They will get paved next year. This will include crosswalks, ADA crosswalk ramps, new crosswalks, signage, total upgrade. So that will greatly enhance the borough. And we're looking for that to come next year. And I think they're tying that with the repaving of King Street in Chippensburg, doing the two projects at the same time.
Those crosswalks won't be those, won't be the faux brick, will it?
No, they will more than likely, they'll put in just the parallel white lines. They will be the plastic poured in place, plastic. That doesn't say we couldn't go in and put, you know, stamped the thermal plaster down for the brick. We can certainly do that, but I think at most they will just do thermal plaster, white lines, stop bars, things like that.
Okay. Anything else? Jack?
Not much since last week. Maybe just a quick update. We we're talking with the Pennsylvania Downtown Center to do a survey for what people might like to see in Newville. Joey's going to be involved in this. Jason Malat, who's the new chair of the Prospect Hosting Committee, is going to put together a conversation with the folks down there so that we can get that on the road quickly. We, let's see, the website, we expect to have it up next month. I thought we were going to have it up at the last meeting, but the the board members wanted a little bit more information, so we've got that information. We're prepared to, and I've talked to Andrea about it, and she's pretty sure we'll get it passed this time. And on the advisory committee invitations to potential members should go out this week. And which will help us, you know, sort of accelerate the process there. And then we did have the Waynesboro Conversation with the folks down there. It was a long meeting, about an hour and a half, a lot of ground covered. I can give you highlights if you want now or we can wait until the full meeting, whichever people prefer.
I think you should probably share it with the board first. EDA Board.
Oh, well, actually, that's a good point. Okay, yeah, well, then we'll do that. But it was a good meeting, they had some interesting ideas, interesting thoughts for us. One thing I would say is that they're very different than we are in terms of how they're structured and the amount of money they have to work with. But other than that, there's some ideas there that we'll be able to explore, I think.
Okay, very good, any questions for Jack? All right, Parks and Rec, anything, Ed? You're muted. Still muted, hold on there. There you go, try it now. Nope. So you don't have anything. Public Safety Committee, Bob?
I have nothing at the stage. I think we've discussed a number of these issues and there's a lot of work in progress as Mr. Potzer mentioned.
I have down about a approval for a reserved parking permit.
For Olive Johnson.
For Olive Johnson, yes, 14 East Bain Street.
I saw a sign up there, I think that's that probably temporary park, new park, right?
Correct. Yes, it'd be temporary reserve parking for 90 days.
Well.
We need a motion to.
I'm making a motion for that.
Okay, so Bob moved it, we have a second? Joey seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those say no. Any extensions, motion carries. All right, anything else for Bob?
Is ninety days a, that or what? I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
I broke up.
Days, that? What is the standard amount of time that we do these, for 90 days, 60 days, 30 days?
Ninety days. Is there? Ninety days.
And this is an extension, correct?
Yes, yeah, she very much needs it.
Right.
Yeah, but this is the only extension that can be granted, correct? Where then we have to do some sort of.
She'll have to read, she'll have to re-submit her doctor's forms, yes. She'll have to get a new authorization.
We're here to serve the public and if there's a need, health need for it, obviously we fully support it.
Fred, were you going to add something?
Yes, we have a letter from Linda Johnson, who lives at 58 West Big Spring Ave, which is at the corner of Big Spring Ave and Chestnut. And she's asked for council to consider. We had a restriction that was approved a number of years ago where we would take the the south side of Chestnut Street, make it no parking, and plow the snow to one side and then haul it away. And she pointed out last year, we didn't have much snow and all that parking was basically taken away. So she has asked if council would reconsider that and only post it when we have a winter storm coming, when we know that we would need to plow to one side and then come in and haul it away in a day or two. And I think it's a reasonable request and parking down there is tight for everyone. When we do post it, the residents move their cars and people on Chestnut Street are very easy to work with. So I think, you know, my recommendation would be to try it for the winter and see how it works.
Yeah, you don't need any action from us.
No, if you're in agreement with it, I will call her tomorrow and have a discussion, let her know what we will try to do and just keep her in the loop.
Yeah, I mean, if it works for our folks and it makes, you know, makes it easier for the citizens, that works for me.
It's only a matter of putting up six or eight signs and they're temporary signs, we can put those up in advance of the snowstorm.
Sure. Any questions about that, comments?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. Anything else under public safety then? All right, quality of life, Joey?
Okay, couple things. First of all, on behalf of the council, Fred sent a letter to Graham Medical Center because I don't know how many people drive by and actually pay attention, but Graham Medical Center has put a lot of work at the front of their property. So Fred sent a letter just to acknowledge that how nice it looks. And he wrote, Dear Dr. Pyone, on behalf of the Newville Borough Council, I would like to thank you and the staff of the Graham Medical Center for the beautiful new plant and other improvements recently completed along South High Street. Members of the Newville Borough Council wish to thank you on all your dedicated public service throughout the pandemic crisis. Sincerely, Fred Potter, Birmingham manager. I thought that was nice, you know, at least people there will realize that we recognize, you know, what they're trying to do and trying to improve.
Right, looks great.
It does, it really does. I kept thinking, what are they going to do? Are they going to make more parking there or what are they doing? But it it turned out very, very nice, because that's, it's a small parking area, but you know, they manage.
Looks good.
It does look nice. Um, the other thing, um Fred would like to replace the Christmas decorations in front of the borough office. And you're thinking to do that after the Christmas season or before the Christmas season, Fred? When we get better price?
The uh the cost of doing what we had in in place in the past, the wreath and the swags, would be almost six hundred dollars. So I went back and I asked for a price for just a five-foot lighted wreath with a bow, and that's five hundred dollars.
Oh, my.
So here's what I'm going to do. If it's okay with you, I'm gonna buy four Christmas wreaths from the uh sale and put them up on the uh office windows out front and at the back door. And I think that's all the decoration. We'll do the candles in the windows for this year.
Right.
I mean, next year we could be at a new location, and I hate to spend a lot of money on this building if, who knows what we would have room for at the new locations.
That's, that's, that's a good idea. I'm all in favor of that, plus it'll help with the funds. Do you know, happen to know how many wreaths we've sold so far?
I know there's at least twenty-five that have been sold, and with these four, you'd be closer to twenty-nine, thirty.
Well, I know that Pastor Molly told me she wants to order one, so I'm to order one for her. And then um one of my friends from the auxiliary in Chippensburg is supposed to be calling tomorrow and ordering four, so. Okay.
I think I think we should send a check and pay her and get everything ordered, do the fifty and I think we'll sell them, no problem.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we'll have any problems selling them. So do you want me to make a motion that we put? Or do you, can we wait till the end of the month? Which do you want?
Well, I I think if we could approve it tonight, we can get the check cut and pay her, and then we'll just pick them up and we'll be done.
Okay, all right, and I think it was for five, I don't have it right here in front of me, but I think it was for five hundred and twenty-four dollars?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so do I have a motion, can I have a motion for um that we pay? Go ahead and pay for the wreath out of the um recreation, the Newville Community Area Events.
How about you just made the motion, Joey?
I'm used to running a meeting, I I'm sorry. All right, so I do, do I have a second?
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right.
Sorry, Scott. And then, then the next thing on the agenda for me is the coat drive. And um Fred, I did talk to Erica um Miller today, tonight, and she's willing to help us in any way that she can. Um, my suggestion is that we advertise it and have a cutoff date of coats for December the twelfth, with the um distribution on the nineteenth of December. Usually done that week before Christmas. Um, I haven't been able to, I need a contact for Mr. Gobin to see if I can put down at his um down at the pharmacy. And then also, I was wondering, like, we talked, we could put at the borough office.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we have those two locations, you know, that would be great. And um I'm gonna bring it up at Borough Council on our church council on Monday night to see if we can use our church to do the distribution, even if we allow, you know, only X amount in at one time. And if we have enough people there to help, then we can take each person and say, okay, what size do you need? You know, what are you looking for? Boy, girl, man, woman? Um, and so that they're not fingering all over them. What do you think?
Good idea.
Okay, and um as far as the the distribution, I'll need that on Monday night after I have council meeting um at the church. So then, if we can maybe, I don't know if it'll be too late to get anything in on Wednesday's paper, but if not, it it'll go in that we can put something in the Valley Times following um Wednesday. And then people can chop Black Friday. Um, when I talked to um Mrs. Miller tonight, I told her that we do accept gently used coats, because, you know, not everybody can afford to go out and buy a new new coat, but that normally we would wash them, you know, and she said, well, I will, she would be more than happy to help, you know, wash those coats. And the other thing is, I would really like to put this in memory of Dr. Sholley, because um, you know, it was the Sholleys that started, you know, the wrapped in warmth program. And I just think it would be a nice honor if we did it in his memory.
Good idea.
So I don't know what anybody else thinks, but um, and I have already had people say, hey, I have picks for you if you want them. You know, so.
Yeah, that that sounds good. Um, I guess you just want a motion from us to to go ahead and
Yes, yes.
Do it, so why don't you go ahead and make the motion and we'll go from there.
Okay, I make a motion that the Quality of Life Committee on Newville Borough Council um participates and conducts the pit drive in memory of the Sholleys this year, with distribution being on December the nineteenth.
So you got a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I propose say no? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Now, that's it.
A comment that would be with that, with the wearing the mask and keeping a distance be part of me.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
We have to be careful with
Right.
Coming and they expect a
Right, right, right.
And the other thing, some of these coats have to be dry cleaned. Not all of them can be washed.
Oh, you can still wash them, even if they're dry cleaned, you can, you use good old wool light, believe me, I know. Yeah.
Fine, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other items of discussion?
Scott, I have a few things that are real quick.
Okay.
Uh, just to make everyone aware, the Municipal Building Committee has met. Uh, we had a very productive meeting. We had a meeting on October twenty-first. Uh, square footage requirements were conveyed for the Borough Office and the Police Station. Uh, Mr. Gobin cautioned us that we should not undersize the building. He would rather see it go a little bit larger to accommodate future needs. What we've been identified uh as having to be responsible for include items such as the telephone system, uh, the computer system, two-way radio communications, emergency generator alarms and uh security cameras. Those will be the borough's responsibilities. We knew this a number of years ago when we discussed this with Mr. Gobin. So I can tell you right now, we have the uh requests for proposals complete for the telephone system, the IT system, and two-way radio communications. Once we have our floor plans done, the architect will tell me what the electric load requirements will be. I can then move forward to uh finalize the RFP for the generator. And I would like to finalize a surveillance camera system. Now Todd is going to meet with Perry Yingling, who does this work for Hilton's Lock Service. And uh a number of the townships around here use Perry uh with good results. So uh the chief is working on that. So I just wanted to let you know, today we did receive from the architect and and less than two weeks' time a floor plan for the police station, which the mayor and the chief are going to review. As soon as we get their uh comments back on that, we will move to the second floor and get that floor plan, and I will share that with you, possibly at the November council meeting. So you can see, we've made remarkable progress here in thirty days. It's uh really moving and coming together very nicely. I know you're all concerned about how will we pay for these improvements. Uh, we have a couple of options. Uh, next year we will be paying off our equipment loan. We could take out a new loan. Uh, my suggestion would be that uh we just do the uh loan to USDA. Include our police car. As you know, any of those other items that we were going to do with USDA have been addressed this year, thankfully. So I would include the patrol car and the other improvements and request somewhere around a hundred thousand from USDA. You mind adding getting sixty percent of that as a loan and forty percent as a grant, which would be uh put us in very nice shape? Does anyone have any objections to proceeding in that manner? Submitting our application to USDA for these improvements?
I don't. I think it's an idea.
Okay, hearing none, that's the way we will proceed. The building committee will next meet uh to look at the floor plans, possibly in a, maybe within the next week to ten days. Um, sad to say, but our leaf back broke down yesterday. It was taken up to Oak Ridge. I can't tell you what's been uh done with it or what the extent of the repairs will be. But the men were out, uh they were using a front-end loader and dump trucks and cleaned up all the piles. We will do our best to keep the streets clean. Uh, in the event the the sweeper does not get back before the end of the season, uh, we can rent a sweeper uh on a daily basis, and we could uh do a sweeping in the first week of December, clean all the streets of leaves, and that would put the town looking in pretty nice shape for the holiday. Tomorrow, Jack and I have a meeting with Chris Galata, and we will be discussing the twenty-twenty-one EDA budget. And Marcus, your report on the uh IRS uh five oh one C three filing uh is very important, because that will open up the EDA that we can apply for foundation grants that we cannot apply for right now. So that will help open up a new avenue of funding. And uh, thanks for that, Marcus. I had a telephone call from Leah Forless. We talked for about an hour. She is opening uh the Launchpad, uh which is a shelter for uh young men uh shell or moving out of foster care, and she has asked to meet with the Borough Council. And so Scott, I gave her your email and contact information, and she would like to join our November council meeting to explain what it is that she's doing, uh the staff that she's has involved, and I think it's all very positive. So uh look for her to join at the uh November council meeting, and that's all I have.
Okay, anything else for Fred? All right, very good. Might be the quickest uh work session we've ever had. All right.
Seems like a good model to follow.
Yes. Yeah, you got it. Can we do? That's the question.
One thing we've added to the agenda, we have added uh old business and new business items to the agenda as requested.
Yep. Um, progress on uh possibly some meeting at the end of the month in the in the meeting room? I, Fred has ordered, he ordered everything. Um, anything else?
TV should be here this week.
Yeah. All right.
Installed fairly quickly or?
Uh, within a day, you know.
Oh, great. Great. We should try it out before the next meeting, just so we know it works and
Right. All right. Sounds good. Waiting on you guys.
I make a motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye? Okay, everybody have a great uh great night. Stay safe. We'll see you soon.
And hopefully, everybody remembered the vote.